I'd like to call a meeting to order, please rise. Can we have a moment of silence for our, keep our troops in our prayers? Salute to the flag, Dennis.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every right and justice for all.
Notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act NJS A-10:4-10 has been complied with and shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Here.
Freeholder Barrett Valente.
Here.
Freeholder Kenny.
Here.
Freeholder Polos.
Here.
Freeholder Tamara.
Here.
Freeholder Valenti.
Here.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Here.
We have some recognitions.
This evening, we're recognizing the honorees that selected by the Ancient Order of Hibernians in South Amboy for their St. Patrick's Day Parade, and the Island Giants Pop Warner Cheerleaders who won their na- a national championship.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valenti, seconded by Freeholder Tamara, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny.
Yes.
Freeholder Polos.
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. Do we have anyone here from the Anch- Ancient Order of Hibernians? No? Okay. Before we recognize the cheerleaders, we have councilman from Woodbridge, Kyle Anderson, in attendance, and we also have municipal clerk from Woodbridge, John Mitch. And I just want to say before we get, uh, make the recognition, it made us all proud of how the Island Giants really excelled and did a great job. I can appreciate that because my daughters were cheerleaders as well in Pop Warner many, many moons ago. But you really made us proud, and I'm sure you really showed everyone there how, how it's done from Central Jersey, Middlesex County, Island, New Jersey. So, uh, with that being said, Freeholder Armwood, you want to join me to make the presentation? Charlie? Charlie, Kenny? Freeholder Kenny from Woodbridge also will join us.
Bring him up here. Bring him up here.
All the girls want to come up in front of the dais here?
Not up.
Oh, this is a big team.
Three teams.
Three teams. Okay. Well, where's the coaches? Come on, coaches, don't be shy. I know it takes a lot of work, sacrifice. I can't thank the coaches enough for taking the time out of your busy schedules because I know it's all volunteers, and it takes a lot of hard work and dedication. And also the parents for taking the time and dedicating and, and bringing your children to practice every, every time you bring them to practice because it certainly makes a difference, and you really showed them how to, how to win a cheerleading competition. My colleague, want to say a few words?
Hard work is what they do. You're, you're exactly correct. If you're in Merrill Park on July 31st, walking or, or sitting in the park, it's nice and quiet, nice and calm, you come to Merrill Park on August 1st, Bedlam is broken out because the cheerleaders are there starting their season, the football players are there starting their season, but it doesn't stop after the season's over, correct? Danielle, is that you over there? No? Alright, I missed, I'm sorry. It's, season doesn't start, uh, doesn't end then. It goes indoors, correct? You train indoors year-round? So it's constantly, they're working to, um, to perfect the craft, to perfect their performance so when they go to the competition, they come out on top just like they did this time. And to the parents and those coaches that help out, congratulations and thank you, and girls, you did a great job.
Following up on Freeholder Kenny's comments, it, when I walked into the meeting room tonight, it felt like August 1st at Merrill Park. There was a lot of energy in this room. I said, "This isn't going to be the typical Freeholder meeting." So, I just want to say, thank you for all you do to make our county look great. And parents, thank you so much for playing an active role in your children's future. Uh, I know it goes said, but sometimes it's said so many times, you may not appreciate it, but we really do appreciate the active role that you play in your children's lives. It makes a difference. You're making sure they're on the right path and they're going to have a bright future ahead of them. So, thank you.
Congratulations. 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 Great job! Maybe we could get a cheer from the cheerleaders? No?
One cheer.
Come on, one cheer.
One cheer, let's go. Can't leave, unless you give us a cheer.
Give us a cheer.
Let's do an easy one, we don't have to do hard ones.
Is there anybody that's missed, that's not here?
Hey, girls, how do you feel? We feel great, oh, we feel so great, huh, we feel great, oh, this is great, this is great, uh-oh, uh-oh, huh, 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 yeah, no sweat, fantastic, go Giants!
Which one of you girls would like to ask about the lights in Merrill Park? Freeholder Director's here. Now's the time.
Get them, get them.
Thank you.
We just fixed that park up, hold on.
Kyle. Does she want to say a few words? Does the head coach want to say a few words? Okay, let her say something. If the cheer director would say a few words, is...
Is this on?
It's on.
Okay. Um, just to Freeholder Director Rios and all the freeholders of Middlesex County, we'd just like to say, thank you, on behalf of the Island Giants, for taking the time out to acknowledge our achievement this season. Um, this has been an unprecedented season for us, it's the first time all three of our comp levels have qualified to go to Nationals, the first time that all three came back with national championships. Um, two of the teams undefeated national champions, and one, which is our youngest level, first time competing for every girl on the team except for one, they actually got the highest score of the day, and so they came back grand national champions. So, um, and none of our success would have been possible without the support from our town council, Mayor John McCormick. Um, there's another councilman, I can't seem to remember his name, but he's the president of our organization. I think his name is Kyle something or other. They're always, you know, always there to make sure that we have places to practice, um, which is very scarce in a town that has five youth organizations. It's hard finding practice spots once we move inside, so, um, they're always really good to us, and we want to thank our town council as well, and that's pretty much it. Hopefully, we'll see you guys again next year.
Great. John.
Take care.
Take him home? At this time, I'd like to call up a superintendent of the vocational schools, Brian Lachlan,
and the Board, Board of Education for the Vocational Schools, John Bisco. They could come up, they have a presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for having us this evening. You know how it is, Brian. A good evening, thank you for having us this evening. As most of the freeholders know, Middlesex County Vocational Technical Schools are celebrating their 100th anniversary. Tonight, we're going to see a, I guess, an edited version, abbreviated version, of a documentary film that was filmed last year by our digital film students. Um, we've edited it down to about seven and a half minutes, I believe. Um, the full version is available for viewing on our district website. Um, but before we show the film, I, I provided the freeholders with a copy of a committee report of Middlesex County Vocational Schools dated September 26th, 1914. A committee was established in the county to investigate the feasibility of establishing a county vocational school back in the 15th day of April of 1914. Uh, this report actually is the conclusions of that study committee, and actually is the foundation for the action which resulted in the formulation of our school district. I just wanted to point out a few things to the Freeholder Board. Your committee further found that the true aim of the vocational schools was to train boys and girls to enter the industry of the community with some definite preparation for earning their living. The trade school, excuse me, the school is not a trade school in the sense that it will turn out journeyman mechanics. The aim is rather to find what industry a boy or girl is best fitted to follow, and then to give him or her such a foundational training as will fit him or her to enter the industry as a superior apprentice, receiving a living wage. The committee studied the number of students who perhaps would be interested in vocational education, and they found, believe it or not, that in this county, in 1913, 1914, there are over a thousand pupils who did not complete the eighth grade. So, there are thousands of youngsters in this county that were dropouts before entering the eighth grade. They also found that by communicating with manufacturers in the county, 54 manufacturers out of 60 were interested in establishing a county vocational school system. Um, and I'm going to take you to the last page, and really, that's, report culminates in the fact that there should be established and maintained in this county, county vocational schools as provided by law, and hereby recommend to this association that a committee of five, which is now our Board of Education, be appointed to establish the schools, and I'll just leave it at that. That was the beginning, and the vocational schools were officially established on the 25th day of September in 1914. And they quickly took their charge and began to construct vocational buildings in the county that opened up the following September. So, this, these are the roots of Middlesex County Vocational School System, and it's, you know, as a vocational educator, you know, it's really quite insightful of these leaders, industrial leaders and freeholders, back in 1914, to have a vision that is still very meaningful and is flourishing today. So, you know, it could never have flourished without the support, not only of this Freeholder Board, but of the many Freeholder Boards from 1914 to the present. And of course, thanks goes to our Board of Education for their support. Mr. Bisco, our current board president, gives us hours and hours of his support, encouragement, and guidance. So, from 1914 until today, the vocational schools have flourished, and we have five locations, as you know, more than 2,000 students, high school students, apprenticeship programs, adult education programs. We are regarded as one of the best county vocational schools in the state, and I think as many of you know, we also garnered national recognition. So, I'm very proud to be able to report to this Freeholder Board that Middlesex County Votech is alive and well in 2015. So, thank you for your support, and with that, we can show the film.
At Woodbridge School, you know, we had the boys' school, which was in New Brunswick, and the girls' school in Woodbridge, and we had segregated populations. Uh, in both situations, they were training young people to enter directly into the workforce. So, that was the goal at that point in time for vocational education. As the years went by, and as our society changed, and the county changed, we began to offer a broader range of, of, of trade areas that we provided training in. And I guess, in recent years, um, we've looked even further to new and emerging trade areas in the county, and also the region, and nationally.
Many times, I'm asked about our school and about vocational education, and it's amazing to me how many people ask, "Is this a regular high school?" We have basketball, baseball, we have sports, we have clubs, so many other organizations, just like any other high school. And people, because it's vocational and technical, really put it in a different category, but these are high school students that come and go to proms, and have dances, and have all the other experiences that a high school student would have. And so, we are a high school. We have to be trailblazers for the next generation, and making sure that we're preparing our kids for the next need that's going to be coming up. You know, there's too many jobs that are going away overseas, and, uh, I'm, I'm a big proponent that we can do everything right here in America, but we have to educate our kids. And if we don't do that, we're in Saudi State.
My hope for the future of a Middlesex County Votech graduate is that they have the fundamental preparation that they've acquired here in the academic scale areas, as well as a quest for knowledge and a passion for their career major. My hope for the graduate of our school is that their decision to come here is validated. They went through us, they learned a lot, they're challenged, and they're prepared to do whatever cha- choice or whatever career that they choose from. Whether they want to go to college, they're prepared to handle the rigor of college. Or they want to go for work, they're prepared to enter the workforce. I want them to look back at this time saying, "I made that right decision. I'm a better person because of this school."
My hope is that they go on to education beyond high school, and get into the field that, 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 or do, or find a career that they like.
My wishes and hopes for my students going forward is that they find the career path that they are the most comfortable in, areas that they can challenge themselves in, and areas where they can be, um, they can reach their fullest potential and give back.
My hope for an MCVTS graduate is for them to leave here, to leave my shop with confidence, with an awareness of who they are, but also an awareness of the world beyond the school walls, beyond their neighborhood, beyond their country, to understand that we're all interconnected, to have integrity, and to have skills that equip them to become anything that they want.
If I had to pick one word to describe MCVTS, it would be interesting.
Inspiring.
Education.
Impactful.
Education.
Awesome.
Possibilities.
Extraordinary.
Rewarding.
And life.
Unique.
Rewarding.
It's just a life-changing.
I present to you the class of 2014.
I say, "Come across that stage," and I hope that each and every one of these young people, their future is bright, there's a future for them to make a living, and that they can live the American dream.
Great job. Okay. This time, we have ordinances, introduction and first reading, the clerk will read ordinance number 15 dash 001 by Ty Lonely.
Refunding bond ordinance of the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, providing for, one, the refunding of certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the county to achieve net present value debt service savings, and, two, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $34 million aggregate principal amount of general obligation refunding bonds of the county to effect such refunding and appropriating the proceeds therefore, and authorizing the public hearing to be held on Thursday, February 19th, 2015, at 7:00 PM, and publication thereof.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 15 dash 001 on first reading?
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valenti, seconded by Freeholder Tamara, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny.
Yes.
Freeholder Polos.
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. Freeholder reports, Freeholder Ken Armwood.
Thank you. Middlesex County Votech Woodbridge Academy seniors at the Allied Health and Biomedical Sciences are undertaking a capstone project before graduation that addresses a biomedical issue. Students will report with adult mentors from outside the school, and spend at least 40 hours in the field with their mentors to explore the effect of early technology use on social development, and whether poor dental care contributes to the onset of diabetes. They have obtained the cooperation of endocrinologists in New Brunswick and Carteret to conduct their survey. With the cooperation of pediatricians, they will devise a quiz for youngsters and a survey for parents to see if children with better knowledge of germs and preventive techniques like handwashing are sick less often. From the Cultural and Heritage Commission, President's Day Celebration, Sunday, February 15th, at 1:00 PM and 3:00 PM, in the historic Indian Queen Tavern, East Jersey Old Town Village in Johnson Park, Piscataway. Join us for a President's Day Celebration at the historic Indian Queen Tavern with Joe Doyle as President John Adams. John Adams was pivotal to the American cause. There is a 1:00 PM session and a 3:00 PM session. This program is offered free of charge. Registration is required. Call 732-745-3030 to register or for directions or information. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Freeholder Armwood. Freeholder Charlie, Kenny.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. The only report I have tonight is that we're in the holding pattern on, in regards to our budget. We're waiting for the state approval. Uh, we anticipate that not coming until after the state introduces their budget, so hopefully we'll have it all before the board and the public by March to be approved, and then, like last year, we can have it over and done with, and get the money and the grants out to the organizations that usually come through the budget. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Freeholder Kenny. Freeholder H. James Polos.
Thank you, Director. First, I'd like to welcome back our colleague, Charlie Tamara. Welcome back. It's good to see you at the dais. Director, I actually had him convinced that all the cheerleaders were here for him tonight before your opening remarks, but, uh, we're glad to have you back, Charlie. Um, on the emergency management side, with the cold weather and so forth, we've had quite a bit of activity with our OEM office, not only at the county, but locally with warming centers and concerns about power outages. Uh, they're always stepping up to the plate to be proactive and to be prepared in the event that those, um, warming centers or additional resources or services are needed, so they've done a great job. We have a lot of volunteers involved with our OEM staff as well, so I want to compliment the entire group. Our fire marshal's office, again, continues to be very, very busy. I've been at probably two or three fires just in the last few weeks, and these have been significant fires in Piscataway. Uh, we had the significant fire in New Brunswick the other night. Uh, so it's been a tough, tough few weeks. A lot of, again, a lot of these fires, again, are preventable, and we're going to be working through our fire marshal's office to try to develop some more education for our residents so that we can avoid these types of tragedies. But yeoman's job, and I have to tell you something, I was in Piscataway the other night, Freeholder Armwood, and, uh, to be out in, I don't know, probably 11-degree weather with wind so strong that it could actually blow you off of your feet, and to see these firefighters out there putting these, uh, putting themselves in harm's way is really something amazing. So, we have great people in our county protecting us each and every day. Our electronic waste, I reported on last meeting, that we had to do dispense with our program because of the lack of funding for it and the lack of contractors who are willing to do it.[1283.26] preparation that they've acquired here in the academic scale areas as well as a quest for knowledge and a passion for their career major. My hope for the graduate of our school is that their decision to come here is validated. They went through us, they learned a lot, they're challenged, and they're prepared to do whatever cha- choice or whatever career that they choose from. Whether they want to go to college, they're prepared to handle the rigor of college. Or they want to go for work, they're prepared to enter the workforce. I want them to look back at this time saying, I made that right decision. I'm a better person because of this school.
My hope is that they go on to education beyond high school and get into the field that, 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 do or find a career that they like.
My wishes and hopes for my students going forward is that they find the career path that they are the most comfortable in, areas that they can challenge themselves in, and areas where they can be, um, they can reach their fullest potential and give back.
My hope for an MC BTS graduate is for them to leave here, to leave my shop with confidence, with an awareness of who they are, but also an awareness of the world beyond the school walls, beyond their neighborhood, beyond their country, to understand that we're all interconnected, to have integrity, and to have skills that equip them to become anything that they want.
If I had to pick one word to describe MC BTS, it would be interesting.
Inspiring.
Education.
Impactful.
Education.
Awesome.
Possibilities.
Extraordinary.
Rewarding.
And life.
Unique.
Rewarding.
It's just life-changing.
I present to you the class of 2014.
As they come across that stage, then I hope that each and every one of these young people, their future is bright, there's a future for them to make a living, and that they can live the American dream.
Okay, this time we have ordinances, introduction and first reading, the clerk will read ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero one by title only.
Refunding bond ordinance of the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, providing for, one, the refunding of certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the county to achieve net present value debt service savings, and two, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed thirty-four million dollars aggregate principal amount of general obligation refunding bonds of the county to effect such refunding and appropriating the proceeds therefore, and authorizing the public hearing to be held on Thursday, February nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at seven P.M. and publication thereof.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero one on first reading?
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Tamara, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Paulus?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamaro?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
Freeholder reports, Freeholder Ken Armwood.
Thank you. Middlesex County VOTech Woodbridge Academy seniors at the Allied Health and Biomedical Sciences are undertaking a capstone project before graduation that addresses a biomedical issue. Students will report with adult mentors from outside the school and spend at least forty hours in the field with their mentors to explore the effect of early technology use on social development and whether poor dental care contributes to the onset of diabetes. They have obtained the cooperation of endocrinologists in New Brunswick and Carteret to conduct their survey. With the cooperation of pediatricians, they will devise a quiz for youngsters and a survey for parents to see if children with better knowledge of germs and preventive techniques like hand washing are sick less often. From the Cultural and Heritage Commission, President's Day Celebration, Sunday, February fifteenth, at one P.M. and three P.M. in the historic Indian Queen Tavern, East Jersey Old Town Village in Johnson Park, Piscataway. Join us for a President's Day Celebration at the historic Indian Queen Tavern with Joe Doyle as President John Adams. John Adams was pivotal to the American cause. There is a one P.M. session and a three P.M. session. This program is offered free of charge. Registration is required. Call seven three two, seven four five, three zero, three zero to register or for directions or information. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Freeholder Armwood. Freeholder Charlie, Kenny.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. The only report I have tonight is that we're in the holding pattern on, in regards to our budget. We're waiting for the state approval. We anticipate that not coming until after the state introduces their budget. So hopefully, we'll have it all before the board and the public by March to be approved. And then, like last year, we can have it over and done with and get the money and the grants out to the organizations that usually come through the budget. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Freeholder Kenny. Freeholder H. James Paulus.
Thank you, Director. First, I'd like to welcome back our colleague Charlie Tamaro. Welcome back. It's good to see you at the dais. Director, I actually had him convinced that all the cheerleaders were here for him tonight before your opening remarks, but we're glad to have you back, Charlie. On the emergency management side, with the cold weather and so forth, we've had quite a bit of activity with our O E M. office, not only at the county, but locally with warming centers and concerns about power outages. They're always stepping up to the plate to be proactive and to be prepared in the event that those warming centers or additional resources or services are needed. So they've done a great job. We have a lot of volunteers involved with our O E M. staff as well, so I want to compliment the entire group. Our Fire Marshal's Office again continues to be very, very busy. I've been at probably two or three fires just in the last few weeks, and these have been significant fires in Piscataway. We had the significant fire in New Brunswick the other night. So it's been a tough, tough few weeks. A lot of, again, a lot of these fires, again, are preventable, and we're gonna be working through our Fire Marshal's Office to try to develop some more education for our residents so that we can avoid these types of tragedies. But yeoman's job, and I have to tell you something, I was in Piscataway the other night, Freeholder Armwood, and to be out in, I don't know, probably eleven-degree weather with wind so strong that it could actually blow you off of your feet, and to see these firefighters out there putting these, putting themselves in harm's way is really something amazing. So we have great people in our county protecting us each and every day. Our electronic waste, I reported on last meeting, that we had to do dispense with our program because of a lack of funding for it and a lack of contractors who are willing to do it. But of course, we have a solid waste group that continues to be very aggressive in trying to look for new opportunities. So although we've suspended that service with our municipalities and now are directing municipal waste to the large box electronic retailers, which is where the Department of Environmental Protection would like it to go, we're working on trying to see if we can still find a vendor who's willing to come into the county, provide the service at no cost to the county, and be able to enhance the level of service we provide to the residents. So solid waste is doing a yeoman's job under Mickey Gross and his team. And last but not least, we had, again, a very productive reentry task force meeting last week. I want to thank the warden and his team and all the folks who were at the, a part of that task force. We've made some really productive strides in a very short period of time of trying to create a new master plan for reentry plan for our county jail and the people who are coming out of that county jail to make them more productive in society and reduce our public safety concerns as a result of their release. So I want to thank everybody who's been a part of that, and we'll probably be coming up with a formal report with, I would say, within the next ninety days or so to give you specifics as to exactly what we're gonna be implementing. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Freeholder Paulus. Freeholder Charlie Tamaro, welcome back, Freeholder.
Thank you, sir. And I, and I think we can all agree that winter has finally descended upon us these past few weeks. With the snow, freezing rain, and icy roads, driving can be and is difficult. I would like to take this time to give an enormous thank you to all our roads and parks employees for doing outstanding job in keeping our roads in the best condition possible. These plow dryers go for long durations, putting aside their personal lives in order to make our roads safe for travel. I am proud of the Middlesex County employees for doing a great job. Well done. As you may have already heard, the township of Edison suffered a fire last Thursday at a public works building on New Durham Road. They lost a significant amount of number, number of trucks, snow plows, salt spreaders during the fire. And I am pleased to report that by rearranging some key county road plowing routes, we were able to assist the township with salting plowing last Sunday night. Working together with both parks and roads personnel, we were able to cover an additional twenty-two miles of Edison Township roads that evening. County personnel provided the salting and plowing operations during that event. I again want to thank and commend the both office park, both the Office of Park, of Public Works and the Office of Parks and Recreation for their creativity and perseverance during this event. Our ability to rise to the occasion, help Edison Township during this crisis, created safer roads for Middlesex County residents. I also want to say thank you to John Paul Amina, our director, Ron Rios, and all the Freeholders who did reach out to make sure that we helped Edison, and of course, Rick Laird, who guided us to make sure that everything got done. Although snow brings with it plenty of hassles for everyday life, let's not forget how much fun it can also be. All the new snow has created a great time, time to get it to our parks for the winter hobbies. Our website lists several activities, but just to name a few, we have two hills for sledding, one in Thompson Park and one in Donaldson Park. As towns are introducing ordinances to ban sledding, we have two great facilities for people that come sledding. And so if your town bans them, come to our two parks and you can have a great time. For all those who enjoy cross-country skiing, the Middlesex County Great Greenway is a lengthy, flat, two-and-a-half-mile track through Metatchen, Edison, and Woodbridge with many entry points along the way. Furthermore, we have numerous trails in our parks and open space that provide spectacular scenery. For all those details and location, please visit us on our Parks and Recreation page on the New County website. Click the link to Beat Your Cabin Fever and check out the full list of winter activities. I also want, as I said on Monday, say thank you to everyone who reached out to me while I was in the hospital, that sent me a card, text messaged me, Facebooked me, made phone calls, came and visited me, sent flower arrangements, sent fruit baskets. If it was warmer out, I can open up a fruit stand. And I also want to thank Sunnyside, they delivered two great sandwiches that helped me through the day. But thank you to everybody. My recovery's coming along slowly, but it is coming along, and, you know, hopefully soon I'll be out running and back to doing the things I like to do. Thank you very much, Freeholder Director.
Freeholder Blanquita Valenti.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. Welcome back, Charlie.
Thank you.
We, we missed you, and we're glad to see that you're on your two feet even though with the help of, of your crutches.
One and a half so far.
One and a half. In the paper a week ago, there was an article that the county tallies a total homeless, and this is something that we do every year. The Point in Time Count is coordinated statewide by the nonprofit Monarch Housing Associates, which works to ensure quality, affordable housing for everyone. Last year, New Jersey counts found thirteen thousand nine hundred homeless men, women, and children. More than two thousand families and four thousand children were homeless, according to Monarch Housing. And this year, on January twenty-eighth, despite the impending winter storm, Middlesex County holds annual Point in Time Homeless Count and Project Homeless Connect as planned. There were three sites where homeless or near homeless people could go to take the point in time survey, get a whole meal, receive information and available services, select an article of winter clothing, and take a shower if so desired. The Board of Chosen Freeholder extends its great appreciation to the many volunteers, service agencies, donors, municipal partners, police departments, and the three host sites, Elijah's Promising, New Brunswick, the Salvation Army, and the Cathedral, C D C, Social Services in Perth Amboy, for partnering with us on this important project. The data collected through the Point in Time will move us forward in reaching our goal of ending homelessness in our county. We will know at a later date how many were found homeless. I also have a report from Mc Foods. It, they released its annual twenty-fourteen report announcing the collection and distribution of just under seven-hundred-forty-one tons of non-perishable foods and necessities in two thousand and fourteen. This was a significant increase from the five-hundred-twenty-nine tons collected in two thousand and thirteen. Besides that, they, Mc Foods received twenty-seven thousand dollars in monetary donations that would use to purchase items needed throughout the year. Each week, the Mc Foods warehouse distributes the donated food to food pantries, soup kitchens, and social service agencies. Approximately eighty different agencies participate in the distribution annually. It is the collaboration among agencies, along with the generosity of individuals and groups throughout the county, that allows us to help our neighbors who are hungry. I want to thank the Mc Foods team, along with all of the people who contributed to its efforts for their tremendous commitment and community spirit. Please maintain the spirit in two thousand and fifteen so that we can continue to provide nutritious food to those who need it the most. And that's the end of my report, Mr. Director.
Thank you, Freeholder Valente. I have a few comments to make. We had our first meeting to get organized for our pancreatic cancer walk, which will be held on May thirtieth, Johnson Park. At this point, it's in the infancy stages as far as organizing the cancer walk, but it is set for May thirtieth. I attended the stated township address, Mayor John McCormick for Woodbridge. He gave a very in-depth report, goals, that's looking, that they're looking for in two thousand and fifteen, and they really have an ambitious agenda ahead of them. And Woodbridge is always moving forward, and they're working hard and progressing all the time. And lastly, on a, on a positive note as well, we have a Middlesex County resident that is an American Idol, and we should root for her. She, she made the second round. Her name is Jack. She's from East Brunswick and a very talented young lady. So I hope everybody could keep watching American Idol and support one of our own. Okay. Mr. Kelso, any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be voided?
There are none.
This time, I'd like to open a meeting to the public on any resolutions listed on the agenda. Anyone like to speak?
I'll move to close the public portion.
Second.
Move to close by Freeholder Tamaro, seconded by Freeholder Valente. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Kelso, are there any items to be, I'm sorry, is there any items to remove from the consent agenda and voted separately by any Freeholder?
Please say.
None? Okay, Mr. Kelso?
Yes, Freeholder Director, a motion would then be in order to adopt the consent agenda consisting of resolution numbers fifteen dash one-twenty through fifteen dash two hundred and forty-seven.
Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion to adopt by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Tamaro. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Paulus?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamaro?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Excuse me, Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes. This time, I'll open up the meeting to the public on any discussion listed. Anyone in the public?
No.
There's somebody back there.
This is not, this is any topic at all?
Yes, any topic.
Okay.
State your name for the record, please.
Stan Surkowski, six seventy-nine Charles Street, Perth Amboy. I was here approximately fourteen months ago, raising concerns about a potential fraud in Perth Amboy, a real estate transaction that was, was perpetrated by several high-level members of the business community. As a matter of fact, the property, the county purchased, a little over five acres, for a little over five million dollars for, that's a million dollars in acres. And I said I would go to the FBI, which I did. I wasn't the only one. The other people, so other people saw through the fraud that was being perpetrated. I spoke to them several times, and they told me this takes time with the, they have to go to Newark, then to Washington D.C. to get the approvals for the experts, et cetera. They called me back at my county office about a month ago, which is good because that means they're still pursuing the issue. And they wanted additional information. I just told them to call the Freeholder Board or clerk to the Board or the attorney for the information that he wanted. In any event, what's happened now is that that acreage, Barry Rosengard's property, five acres, was not on the waterfront. The six acres that is on the waterfront, the marine property, that is gonna be donated to the county, I think for one dollar. They passed an ordinance on January fourteenth, ordinance authorizing agreement with the county of Middlesex for their transfer of real estate property for the development of the county park. I'm in favor of county parks, block two thirty-eight, which is, again, contiguous, contiguous with Barry's. But this property, this six acres, actually faces the water, the Arthur Kill Staten Island is right across the river. What's interesting about this property is that the owners of this property haven't paid taxes for years, at least five years, because I've been raising this issue at council meetings, and, because I inadvertently found this. I says, does the mayor know it? No response. City council know that these owners from Brick Township haven't paid taxes? No response. It's called plausible deniability. So I says, well, who gave permission for these people not to pay taxes? At that time, it was close to a million dollars, which the taxpayers of Perth Amboy had to, had to make the difference. So all I was told, well, deals like this are made for whatever reason, whatever reason. And I, and I says, well, the tax collector, because they haven't done the resolution that day, the tax class collector, Nancy Martin, who was the mayor of Almeda, authorizing the collection of interest on deliquent taxes and assessment. This property never appeared on this list for at least five years, and Mayor Diaz knew it, and her cronies knew it. So this may have been a crime on their part from withholding this information. I'm not an attorney, so the FBI's gonna get this information also, because when they called me up four weeks ago, they wanted some additional information, like I said. What you should do, because they passed it, they're gonna donate it to you for a dollar, and I think they purchased it for between one dollar and a hundred dollars at a foreclosure. Last year, after I've been addressing this issue for a long time, and I'm saying, why would a person have six-acre prime property, this guy gets a million dollars in acre, so they should get at least a million dollars in acres too? Six million dollars. What's going on here with Kushner, the billionaire, Rosengard, and the multimillionaire, other entities? So I was trying to figure out, and I realized that this property had to be foreclosed after Barry's property, the five-million-dollar property that you purchased, that was probably fraudulent appraisal, no application, no approval for high-density housing, just a hypothetical appraisal, and it's an appraisal. I, I know Mr. Freeholder Paulus knows what I'm talking about in terms of the jargon, because he's in real estate. First time I ever seen such an appraisal. In any event, Barry's property had to close before this property, because if this property closed on a foreclosure, they kept it hidden from the public eyes deliberately so somebody wouldn't go in and say, I'll buy it for twenty-five thousand on speculation.
Time.
All right, I could, you have a meeting next, what, January seventeenth? No, February seventeenth? When's the next meeting?
Nineteenth.
I'll be here next time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay. Okay, everyone hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
State your name, please.
Okay.
Argenus and Luke.
Okay, my name is Luke Koppes. I work for the Alliance Center for Independence.
And your name? My name is Argenus. I work for Alliance Center for Independence.
Okay, we're a disability organization in, in Edison, but we serve Middlesex, Union, and Somerset Counties. So Argenus wrote up this testimony, and he asked me to read it for him. Dear members of the Middlesex County Board of Chosen Freeholders, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm representing the Alliance Center for Independence, a center for independent living, which assists people with disabilities in Middlesex, Somerset, and Union Counties. We are based in Edison, and we border, we're right on the border of Edison and Ford's. I am also representing myself. I'm a person with a visual impairment, and I'm a resident of Ford's. I came here tonight to ask that you approve construction of four audio traffic signals on the, on Amboy Avenue. And this is very important for us because we're, we are, we are on Amboy Avenue. We serve people with disabilities, and it's a very busy highway, very busy road. There are several intersections there. There's a school, there's a couple of mini strip malls, there's a couple of office buildings, and it's dangerous for people with disabilities, especially people who are visually impaired to cross the street. And audio signal will be very helpful for the safety of pedestrians who use the street to get back and forth, get back and forth to our office, because we have a lot of people come to our office to get services, and also for people in the community. There's lots of elderly people in the community, and an audio traffic signal will help in this effort. And these are, these traffic, those crosswalks on Amboy Avenue that we were, wish to have these traffic signals be placed in, and those are on... I came here tonight to ask that you approve construction of four audio traffic signals on Amboy Avenue. And this is very important for us, because we are on Amboy Avenue. We serve people with disabilities, and it's a very busy highway, very busy road. There's several intersections there. There's a school. There's a couple of mini strip malls. There's a couple of office buildings. And it's dangerous for people with disabilities, especially people who are visually impaired to cross the street. And the audio signal will be very helpful for the safety of pedestrians who use the street to get back and forth, get back and forth to our office, because we have a lot of people come to our office to get services, and also for people in the community. There's also elderly people in the community, and an audio traffic signal will help in this effort. And these are, these traffic, those crosswalks on Amboy Avenue, that we were, wish to have these traffic signals be placed in, and those are on Ford Avenue and King George Post Road, also New Brunswick avenues, and of course, on our street, Amboy Avenue, right in that general area of Edison-Ford's border. If approved, the audio traffic signals will assist pedestrians across this extremely busy road and the intersections nearby. In that area, there are several office buildings, like I said, including a 7-Eleven, a Dunkin' Donuts, a couple of small malls, a church, a school. And our office is located there. As I said before, we assist people with disabilities, and a lot of the people that we assist are visually impaired. So I'm just, the audio traffic signals will help in this, in helping people cross the street. So, and they will obviously cut down on accidents and pedestrian incidences. So it would, the audio traffic signal will help me if someone with a visual impairment crosses the street independently. So I don't have to rely on others to help me cross the street. Okay? And as I said, the signals will actually cut down on accidents. Okay? And again, I'm here to ask approval by the Board of Freeholders to approve this measure. We've talked with, I've talked with the township of Woodbridge, and they're helpful in this effort, and I'd like to thank them for their support.
That was on the agenda tonight, and it's approved. We just voted on it.
Okay.
If our engineer, Rich, wants to expand on it a little bit?
It's Resolution 148 on the agenda. It was needed because the state maintains the signal, and the state will be performing the work.
Okay.
Okay.
So we want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the public?
(inaudible)
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 Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jose Negrone. I live in 272 Sanford Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey. Please bear with me, because I wrote this on my own and being very nervous. Okay. My name is Jose Negrone, father of an assassin murder victim. A little over two years ago, my son Joshua Negrone was savagely gunned down on Remsen and Hell Street in New Brunswick, New Jersey. Back then, I knew the city dropped the ball somewhere somehow, because three young people got murdered in a city block that's no more than a half-mile long, in a city that's no more than three-and-a-half-mile square mile radius. I sometimes, you know, I knew something was wrong, because, again, the girl got murdered, Jessica Torres on Remsen and Hell Street. Three weeks later, another young kid, 17-year-old kid, June, was murdered. And two days later, my son was murdered at a candlelight vigil here in New Brunswick, New Jersey. Now, this could be me, because, you know, that tells, you know, with that being done, that tells me that, you know, pretty much Latino kids is not, you know, Latino kids' lives is not important in New Brunswick. But with the help of some officers, Lieutenant Pappas, I don't know if he's Sergeant Pappas, Martinez and Vergarias, Middlesex investigator, you know, someone was brought to, someone was brought for that crime, was apprehended for that crime. And with their investigation, and with my, I'm more than convinced that this individual that they had in custody was the perpetrator, was responsible for my son's murder, all right? This person was brought into court, and from the beginning of the court sessions, it looked like my son Joshua, which was the victim in this case, somehow was on trial, because for some reason, Judge Payon gave the lawyer and his defendant, which is Masarani, and the defendant was Javon Nail, they gave him everything in their power to make it special for them. You know, the defendant, you know, they, everything that was asked for them to do, they was given by the court, you know? The trial, knowing, the court knew that this was a witness case, the trial, the court allowed them to take up to two years to bring this individual to court. So what happens? Two years later, when this individual was brought to court, you guys, I don't know if I'm saying to you guys, but I'm saying somebody was responsible for changing the judges in this case. From Judge Payon, they went to Judge Barry Weisberg. Barry Weisberg, as I looked into his probarogue, this guy's a civil suit judge. How, in his first criminal case, get put into a murder case? Who, who, who comes up with that, a murder case? And a murder case that's in progress already. If that's not bad enough, you guys changed prosecutors on me. Not once, but twice. Later, with the information I gathered, that Mannion and Schneider wasn't the best prosecutors on this, along with Barry Weisberg. So all along, from the beginning, Joshua Negrone, which is the victim in this case, had no, had none of the chance. So, you know, right now, because the Judge, because of Barry Weisberg, Judge Barry Weisberg, arrogant, arrogance, and, you know, he made himself like he was more important than justice for Josh. And evidence that was in this case was withheld on this case. And therefore, today, the murder of my son is walking the streets of free man today. Now, forgive me for saying so, and I might be out of line of saying, but I almost can guarantee you that if it was one of them kids from Rutgers University, got slain in one of them streets, everything was in their power. You guys' power would have been done for that individual, they'd be see some time. But because it was Joshua Negrone, who probably had a criminal case, but it's most important, my son wasn't careful enough to have the top lawyer, or the top prosecutor, or the top judge in this case assigned. And because of that, his murderer is running, is running free out there. Again, some of you guys dropped the ball. I don't know who, but somebody here dropped the ball.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Move to close the public portion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries.
Is there a route that the gentleman that was just here, is there a route that he can go to if he wants to?
Sir?
Yeah.
Just to make a comment, that the Freeholder Board has no jurisdiction over the prosecutor, how he prosecutes a case, and we have no jurisdiction over how the judges run the court system. Thank you. That's all I could say to you, because that's our own, we have no responsibility, we have no role in the prosecution, or the defense, or in how Superior Court is run, and who gets assigned as a prosecutor, and who gets assigned as a judge in a case.
Well, that's the reason I'm here today, because you guys should be happy hands-on in that situation like that.
We have no control over that.
We don't have the power.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion, there's a motion to close?
Some.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Tamaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Tamaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.